Yeah, I like everybody in the October twenty-third, um, meeting of the Nibley City Planning Commission here at Nibley City Vault. Go ahead and make a quick call. Troy about.
Brett.
Hershey.
Nick Keska. Uh, leave a Robert City Planner.
Sure.
Thank you, everybody. Um, we'll go ahead and move forward to item number two on the agenda, which is the approval. Um, of the August twenty-eighth and September eighteenth. Meeting minutes in the current agenda that we can't force. To group.
I'll make a motion to approve both agenda or both minutes. From the twenty-eighth and also September eighteen. And also the. Agenda of current agenda.
Your motion of approval, Barry, we have a second, second by Troy. Okay, we have a motion for approval for tonight's agenda, including the prior previous two meeting minutes. Um, just go to go to vote on favorite.
Aye.
Any kind of posts, okay, then. So we'll go to um, to item number three on the agenda, which is a training uh, for the Utah Open and Public Meetings Act. Lead us into.
To portray or continue.
If we watched it. Three times. Yeah, so enjoy your popcorn.
Pushed the wrong button.
Oh.
This one?
It's the eight minute one.
Right there. Is it, uh? There it goes. Can I?
No. It's Brandon.
Oh. Why did the sound go away when I did that? Let's see here. Sorry. I mean. Weird. I mean, I guess I can just go back. No. Sound. Every machine says the sound is on. Gonna leave it there.
And it'll be in the little bit of the kitchen, because those. The closed meeting is called four minutes or three minutes. These are the other body. Let's say. Which might be. Yes. Very. Sounds like very, very. On the government body, those are using all of those. It's about a lot of this, as much as we can escape that. Those biggest. And people obviously. We're the new Roman. Until. We follow. The people. It's a little bit of. Very. You stress. Stuff is all members. At eight. Record. We're working. Or if I can personally. Your post.
Um, do you have any questions? Um, you can always tell what's new in that training based on the sound quality going a little wacky. So the new um. New provision is kind of like going a little bit back in time, step back in time. They required that the meeting schedule be posted. At the physical location on the public meeting website and on the public notice website and on the city's website. So I was just commenting to our staff today that we are running out of bulletin board space because there are so many postings that are wired in. They're just kind of, I don't know that I've seen a person actually stop without bulletin board before. But we post it as required by law. Um, also, since we have two potential council members sitting here, um. Closed meetings must be labeled as closed meetings. They can be called executive sessions. They can be called closed sessions. It is a closed meeting and it can only close for those five purposes that are outlined. Um, Nibley City makes it a point to always put those on the agenda and the exact reason the meeting meetings being closed, there are some entities that kind of put a blanket statement on their agendas that they may close this meeting. That is really not appropriate to to take place and it is not considered open and public. So, um. I also wanted to note that the planning commission is the most transparent of both both the uh, public entities. Well, there's three with the Parks and Rec Advisory Committee. Because you guys post your agendas the Friday before your meetings and so you're meeting the council by about four days. Uh, but that's part of your procedures and county just has a little bit different procedures. So if you don't have any questions for me, I have questions for you. The mayor insisted upon a test. So, okay.
Or I have a question. Where are the questions? Can't be. Posted within three days, but after approval. They're not being approved until the next.
Meeting.
Next meeting, so. Um, we're posting early. Is that still okay?
Yes, that's fine. Yeah, I'm pending pending minutes. You have thirty days to post those. We're way above that. It's typically a week or so. Once they're approved, you have three days.
Does this count over any?
This counts as your training. Um, we are going to, we've just gone through our city audit and the auditor ensure that our public bodies have been trained in the Open and Public Meetings Act. And we're just kind of ahead of the game. So next year when we go to do our audit, we will say you've been trained and then we have your training for the next year. So it just kind of goes that way. Um, I've done training myself, um, but if you want to view the eight-minute video, you get popcorn. So you guys can get direction on how you prefer to be trained. Um, we could also give you training on grandma. Um, we could probably get you to that full hour, Brett, pretty easily, especially if we. Um, this is the only training that's required by law.
Okay. Who who is not being team on concerned. We audit ourselves.
We audit ourselves.
We hire an auditor to come.
Yeah, but they're not looking at our work for each other. Yeah, we we do one ourselves.
I just just one minor correction. It's. It's the only one required by law in general for the public. Bodies, but the planning commission. Has four hours of extra training. So that's what um, Brett was alluding to. So.
Sorry, I didn't speak there.
You have four hours plus because you have this plus the 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 four hours really are other topics.
And I'm giving the city council values of flying commissions so much. You you've been given a handful, especially with new state requirements. You thought you received most of our public hearings. And um, Nibley City goes above and beyond in transparency by several times having a a second public hearing when you guys have had to hear the the public and it's contentious. We want the public to understand that, yes, we're here to listen to you. So we decide to hold that second public hearing, but we do appreciate that you're taking that on and and what's. How to say is frustrating in that one record is that you guys didn't run for an election for this. You were appointed and when you run for run to be elected, you're kind of signing up for that. Um, and this is just get kind of been placed on your shoulders. So I I appreciate that. I know our council appreciates that. Um, so with that, I don't have chocolate because behind you is chocolate. So if you answer a question correctly, feel free to grab chocolate. Not sure. Okay. What is the following is not justification for closing meeting to discuss the character competence or health of an individual to hold investigative. Proceedings regarding allegations of criminal misconduct. To interview a person applying to fill an elected position or to discuss pending or reasonably imminent litigation. And just raise your hand. Troy. The answer is C, grab yourself candy bar. Regular open and public meetings require twenty-four hours notice. The public notice includes the meeting agenda, date, time, and place. Notice is posted at the Utah Public Notice website. The public body's website. And in a public location such as the location where the meeting will be held, true or false? Troy raised his hand. He gets the candy bar. When a public body or forum, also known as a simple majority, meets to discuss or act upon government business, it is considered a public meeting, true or false?
Yes, yeah, true.
The answer is true. Thank you. Um, this one is my favorite. A majority of a governing board governing board members attend the same church and may be in the same room at the same time. What should they do? A have some governing body members by the different church. B make sure enough governing body members will not attend the same week, the same week. C provide notice of a public meeting or D nothing this falls within the chance or social meeting exception.
D.
Thank you. Nick gets the candy bar. It is D. Oh, skipped. A recording must be complete and unedited record of all open portions of the meeting from beginning to end and be labeled with the meeting date, time, and place. Um, the public meeting, public notice website accepts files up to two hundred megabytes. You you do not typically have this problem, but. Other public bodies meetings go very, very long and I have to break those recordings up in order to house them on the public notice website. If they are too big. We have to pay for that storage and provide the link. So I try to ensure that we can keep them small enough that we don't have to pay for that extra storage. But I always make sure the recordings are stopped in it in a. In a place where it is very obvious that there was nothing missed in between the recordings. Um, sometimes it's in the middle of a sentence or sometimes it's.
Zip those recording.
Can I what?
Zip. So they're smaller.
But. Um, they're very large. And and I'm not sure you can zip them because you do have to place the link on the website and. Is a zip considered a link, a link to it? Who presses it? I'll have to try that on some of these recordings that are just barely over that two hundred, because that would be so nice, um, we we put them in a Dropbox and place the Dropbox link on the public notice website.
Appreciate. Ten o'clock. Just this much. A meeting.
Good, if you didn't. If you wasn't strategic about it.
Yeah, seriously, just have a little clock like that that costs six dollars.
After meet the candidates evening, I did suggest to the mayor that we have a clock count done for the council members. He said no. A governing body may not take any vote during a closed meeting unless it's a vote to end the closed portion of the meeting and return to an open meeting. Answer is true. If a new topic not on the agenda is raised by the public body during an open meeting, the governing body may discuss the topic, however, final action may not be taken on the new topic during that meeting.
True.
Also true.
It's true. It's a simple agenda. You can talk about.
They can talk about it. Yep. Within three business days after approving written minutes of an open meeting, make improvements in any public material available at the Utah Public Notice website, the entity's primary office and the entity's website, true or false? True, they've all been true. That's the end of your test, you guys passed. You have to get eighty percent or above and according to my calculation, you all did that. If you would like a certificate or need to provide it to any other public entities, I can get that certificate for you, otherwise I just create the certificate and put it in a file that I can provide to the auditor's office. Okay?
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you. See.
Sure, you have members. She used to be in this meeting. Is when when our meeting's over. Sometimes we. Stick around, we stick around and we still passionate.
Mm hmm.
Yeah.
Which is okay for two of you, passion.
Hmm.
Really, right?
Yeah, there's there's if there's.
Break it up, break it up.
Notice that I kind of start sidling over and I'm not listening and yeah.
Good question I had is um. You know, I see these things, I'm city councils and craziness going on, they've always got, not always the, especially the bigger cities have attorneys. In the meeting.
Yeah.
City attorneys. Do we do that at all? Is our city attorney ever regularly attend?
Only when it's needed for a certain agenda item.
Not regularly.
Did you see that?
Probably get there at some point.
That is. Young was being belligerent. In front of the. Well, they. Kicked him out. Then his ear came up and started being, I guess, because they they were using curse words and some law says that. Curse words don't technically count as like uncouth behavior in a public meeting or something, and this guy was a civil attorney. And they kicked him out and then he basically filed a lawsuit to the council. Crazy, yeah. So, yeah, I give it's interesting, so. Yeah.
Um, I would have to.
Law. No, it's it's coming up soon, yeah.
I do know under our open um. Public comments period, there are stipulations that you can't. Be negligent or be be grading or anything to the members of the public body, but I don't know how legally standing that is.
And.
But if you're if you're broadcasting. Like we do.
Mm hmm.
That's a that's a violation of the FCC.
Yeah.
Languages.
Or pictures.
Because you can be fined.
A good point.
I think you remember that one.
Yeah, yeah, we had language and pictures, the initial.
Person watching us.
Oh, really?
We don't do this to the public anymore, that's why.
That's why I run YouTube, it's great.
Weren't those kids like in the East Coast too or something?
Uh, yeah, we don't know where they were, but yeah.
Grumble like.
Did they were?
Um, the the note that Brett brought up also applies to email as well, so you should not be emailing free. Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, we can, you know, we can get information out to you, like, hey, there's this thing's coming up or. You know, something like that, but nothing that should be discussed in a. Public meeting.
Yeah, open debate shouldn't happen by email.
Right, right, it shouldn't be like a. Conversation going on.
Okay, anything else to share? Thank you.
Welcome.
Appreciate it.
Mm hmm.
Okay. We'll move on to the next item on the agenda. Which is um, I've number four, which is a workshop or open space subdivision code. Back to our good friend.
Yeah. Uh. I I just wanted to report on what I've. Done so far on this, the and and just bounce off kind of one draft, I I think there were different. Ideas expressed and and so. If this doesn't hit the mark, you know, this is like as rough of a draft as you can get and just based on some of that discussion and and some of the. Uh. Comments that were made. So I think this first one, though, I feel like is pretty straightforward and I mean, we can, we can tweak it if you think it doesn't quite hit the mark of the intent. But uh, the rest of it probably needs a little bit more critique. Uh, increase, so increase setbacks for side and rear yards of butt property with greater setback requirements. Um, so side yards increased to ten feet and rear yards increased to twenty-five feet, which is. Really what it typically is in the underlying zone. So. I can pull up the the code, the specific code language. Um, this next one. Would require variation in lot sizes for all subdivisions with forty or greater lots. Um. So, and and this came from uh, suggestion from Troy. Uh, but but there was a lot of discussion just in general amongst the group of having more variation in lot size, so no more than forty percent of lots could fall within a range of fifteen hundred square feet, so that would require at least. You know, three different. Lot sizes, more or less, uh, within that fifteen hundred range, so it was kind of forced some some variation. But on the flip side, what it does do. It what? What is um in this current draft is that uh, we would remove the minimum lot size and frontage requirements. So we could, and and just to. May, we we could dabble in this if we want to, if we think, oh, that's just too small or. You know, we don't want, we don't want lots that small. Uh, but in general, you know, this was necessary just to allow the flexibility. Uh, when if you're going to, if we're going to require this variation. Uh, we can't really put them into a corner on on. The specific size of of lot they need to have. Um, like I said, we can, we can have some parameters if you want to go there, but just looking at the the ordinance, at the end of the day. Uh, the same number of lots would be allowed, uh. It's just, there there'd be variation in how big they are, so you could, you could. Even in, you know, in our one zone, for example, have a very small lot, under under the way that. Or the draft ordinance is written. But there would probably wouldn't be much of an incentive to do that because you're already capped on the number of lots. So. Um. But it just allows for that flexibility. Um, technically, we already have this flexibility baked into the cluster subdivision code. Which hasn't been used hardly at all, um, at least not recently. Uh, Stonebridge is the last one. But anyway, so that's that's in the current draft. And then um, this this next one just suggested by staff, when with with this. Uh, flexibility in the in the lot size, just to adopt a minimum buildable area of at least fifteen hundred square feet. And this is just so that lots are buildable considering setback requirements, so in some cases. There's additional setbacks, like if it's on an arterial road or if it's adjacent to a certain zone. Uh, where it really shrinks the the building footprint and that becomes. Difficult to build on, so if a subdivider comes in, we just don't want it. Them to be in a position where it's not feasible to build, even I mean fifteen hundred is small, but. It's not, I I think it's re- a reasonable size that you can at least build something on there, you know, a house on there. That's just, that would just be the bare minimum, so that that's what. Staff has. Put in there so far, I know we discussed in the last meeting. Maybe working with the developer, someone to sketch. Something up, haven't done that yet, we could, we could go there if you think we're kind of hitting the mark here, but just wanted to kind of bounce this off the planning commission first to see. If we think this is along the lines of of where we're headed or. Or if we want to go in a different direction.
Great, thank you.
Oh, and I'll just pull up the the code, I mean, there's kind of the some, the summary is pretty. Pretty brief, but the. That you can nip, we can nitpick the code, I mean, you don't have to. Wordsmith every little thing, but but just. If there's something you want to change or do differently or just have any feedback. We talk about that.
The ten feet and twenty-five feet is based off of. Uh, the existing subdivision.
Yeah, so that's the standard. Um, setback requirements for R two A, R two subdivision.
If it's next to a existing.
Yeah, so the way I was trying to craft the language so that it.
Because of its ten feet.
Capture that intent.
On a side yard, you got ten feet. Eight feet. That means you got twenty feet of. Nor. Or we. Or. Does that make sense?
Yeah, but this, I mean, this is. This is just what was discussed as a, because the.
I mean, I agree.
Yeah.
I just don't want. That's not what we don't. News.
Yeah, I mean, that's.
This thing this time. Yeah. But if it's existing. If it's her. If it's her uh. If their side governor doesn't really network, it's a. And it might be an issue. Does that make sense?
Yeah, so the way the way it's written, it says greater distance required, this is this is for the. Ten feet for any side yard which abuts existing property with residential zoning that requires a minimum setback of ten feet or greater for side yard interior, so. So just if if the if the adjacent property. Has that setback, then you think you gotta match it. Um.
Eighty fifty.
And it just, it it sets it at ten and twenty-five. Uh, we could go, we could say it just needs to match it, but in general. I think ten and twenty-five is adequate. Uh.
This is against existing.
Yeah, there's gonna be, there's some zoning where we have a thirty foot. Uh, rear yard or and a fifteen foot side yard, but there's, there's few of those and I feel like in those cases, ten and twenty-five is gonna be enough anyway.
Twenty-five is standard.
Yeah.
For.
Yeah, so it just, it's just baked into there on the setbacks where. It uh, there are lower setbacks. It just increases it, and that's just to address those those comments that were made of. You know, in in that, when that subdivision, if the field subdivision came through that. Oh, well, they're gonna have a five, five foot setback, it's gonna be right there and. You know, that's. It it would increase that to. To ten on the side yard and then. And then increase it from fifteen to twenty-five on the rear yard. They'd have to design around that, you know, maybe maybe those lots would be the ones that'd be a little bigger or.
But they can, they can put cement.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, we're, we don't stop anyone from putting.
It's just a building like.
Yeah, yeah. Well, it's, it's actually the. The a shed has looser setbacks, but it's the, it's a home, it's really the primary dwelling that the setbacks apply to.
Sheds, can you go five, because it is lowest five, sheds?
There, one foot on the rear, three foot on the side, but it depend, I mean, there's a lot of. Depends on the height of the shed, then it goes to ten if it's over fifteen feet high. A lot of people have public utility easements on their property. So that becomes more restrictive and there's, anyway.
That's that's tough, because. All. It's a vacuum.
Yeah, yeah, the the corner lots are tricky because you can't be on either. Um, you can't, you can't be. Near either street. You can't be in the front yard or the front yards or the side yard street if you're shed, but anyway, so that's. That's what's in there, um.
That's why I have my question, I would, I'm okay with that.
What about, did we um, wanna, I mean, in some ways. Given we saw originally, this almost kind of feels like a its own zone, you know. Do we want to entertain the idea of making this like, remember our R M is to be a mat and all deal? Do we want to keep you, I guess my question is, should this be a legislative thing? Because is, should it be legislated because in the context of? Does the community around. I hear this that stands to be built, do we want them to happen, but they feel like this is valuable open space? Um, we want or the slated body. To. Treat this as such as though it's like a unique organs on in and of itself, given density, perceived density impact to a pre-existing neighborhood. Um, because frankly, if we want to do that, then I'd say match the setbacks and everything else is fine. In my.
You can say, should the public have? An opinion? What the.
If if. Kind of like, should we make this a legislative thing process so that we can allow, like, let's say this is going into near a pre-existing name. Directly adjacent. Should the public be able to provide input? Or they feel like. This would be valuable open space because or I think.
I mean. I'm feel. What do you mean? You 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 want that. That's what the public hearing is. Right, they can.
Well, so the public hearing is, hey, uh, we're gonna zone this to R two A. And then after that, it's. Basically administrative, if they want to do this, right?
Right, so so the way it's set up now, and it's it's a little. It may be a little bit different process than, for example, Brett, you had to go through with your subdivision. Because city council doesn't get involved and there's not a whole lot of negotiation and part of that happened because of. The state changing their rules on subdivisions. And we, and the open space subdivision, conservation subdivision, it was never an overlay, it was never a zone, so it wasn't, it was never really a legislative decision, it was a bit of a negotiation and and there was. More, I feel like there was more in the past. Public. Uh. Opportunities for the public to voice their opinions about it. Maybe it is now because. It's an administrative approval, so really, as long as they have the underlying zoning that's set up. It comes to planning commission, planning commission approves it, never goes to city council. And then once the planning commission approves the preliminary plot, it's staff approval at final plan. So. It, the only time it goes to council or to ci- to city council, I guess yours would have anyway, because you dedicated open space to the city. So that, I guess that. The public might have a chance to. There, but um, I think what. Maybe what uh, what Nick's. Suggesting is an option. Is either it become a a zone in of itself. Or or an overlay, I think, I think the way it's set up, it probably makes more sense. If you're gonna go that route, that it'd be an overlay. I think the only thing I would caution on that is if this is something we really want to push and we want to encourage developers to do, if we add that. Extra layer of. Kind of subjectiveness in in the approval, uh, yeah, you might get approval, you might not. Uh, there might not be as many of them that want to do it.
I guess I have a question, that is such a stark, it could be, it's such a stark contrast in. A transitioning development from. An R two even to something like this, it's just, I don't know. I don't know if it makes sense that this would be more of a legislative body decision of like. Yeah, we look to the plan like it. You know what I mean? Versus like, once they get R two A, it's just. It's, that's underlying zoning set. The legislative body by yes, saying yes to an R two A. Change in zone. We don't know if we're getting an R two A. As we think it is or R two A under this, it's. You know what I mean? That's why I guess I ask the question like that, just to.
Can you speak to? The difference between what this currently is versus an overlay, like how those two differ?
Really, the only difference would be the, it would add an extra step in the process, a legislative. And I mean, unless we go, unless we. Unless, uh, zone that. Out front and proactively decide this is where things are gonna go. This is where we want to open space out. I guess the city could do that. But if we're just gonna have it as a potential tool, the applicant has to come in. It would be similar to the R P U D process where they come in with an application. They've got to convince. You and the council. That they've got a good plan or, or that it's a good place for this. And then. And, and then. That's a discretionary decision. Yes or no? Uh, and then, and then they go through the subdivision process. So it adds an extra layer of, of process. And it, and that layer of process, I feel like. Some. Developers, property owners would. Shy away from it because they. There's some risk there whether it's going to get proved. Now, I guess if. If. Maybe there's not. Maybe they don't have to bring a whole design. Maybe they just. Ask, hey, I wanna do an open space subdivision. It could be a relatively quick process, but I think. I think people are gonna wanna know what it looks like.
I do. I mean, I, it's kind of assuming, right? Like, hey, if we wanna do an open space neighborhood, that means. This is gonna be quite a bit harder to develop.
Yeah.
I think, I just think. Because it's such. Potentially a stark, dramatic contrast in density, but you know, as, as they're kind of abut up against. The neighborhood that's or, or third map nature. Just allowing the legislative bodies to. Do one extra step. Right?
Yeah, that's an option, um. But just.
As then it's not, as then it's coming to this commission.
Yeah, I mean, just a little bit of history. I mean, that several of these have been approved without that. And I, I know they haven't in the R two A zone. But. There's. There hasn't been any more density. Added to these, to the neighborhoods of all these other ones that have come in. Compared to the underlying, you know, the surrounding neighborhoods, underlying zoning than what's already in here. There's a little more flexibility. But the, you're capped at forty percent at mo- at most. Additional lots than what you would at the underlying zone, so.
But we know, I don't, it's a perception thing.
It is, yeah, but.
That's really what we're getting down to is.
Right. I, I guess I'm, I guess I'm, what I'm saying is. Is it, i- is what we've done really broken in that respect of allowing it as administrative? I mean, I mean, I know we had that one example. Where maybe that, that would have. Made sense, uh. To have. I mean, it was already a legislative decision anyway, because they had rezoned it to R two A. And then they denied it. So.
Is a concept. Plat required at his own zoning change.
No, it's not required, uh, to be honest. When, when this applicant came in, I suggested. That he go through that process in tandem. Because he was already told twice, he's already told no twice. And they didn't know what they were really gonna get. And they said, well, show them what they're gonna get. And.
Yeah.
That, I don't know if. So I don't know. It's a. It's a double edged sword, but they don't, they don't have to. You're right.
Yeah.
They don't have to.
He could have came with no concept plan. They got rezoned to R two A. Then. We would have been done.
Yep.
Yeah, I just. I just wonder.
It would have gone because the neighborhoods around it were on pretty much R two A.
Mm-hmm. I just, I, I, I think you have to be careful about the framework of our ordinance though, because. If you're forcing them to go through this legislative process. When before it was a, it was more, they had more surety, they kind of knew what they could get out of it. Um. At that point, you're pretty much the same as an R P U D. Process, which is. A little. It's a little bit more, I mean, you're, you're going to get more with an R P U D generally more density and more. Uh, benefit out of that. So. I wonder if we would inadvertently push people. Into those kind of developments rather than an open space subdivision if we add that extra layer. So.
I was trying to think. But what's it?
Yeah.
It's been for the middle of her. This thirty. What's that for the city? What's this? Thank you for the stadium. I kind of like having the ability to say to someone that says, hey, wanna. I wanna change the zoning to R two A. Well, okay. What's in for us? If you're not gonna do an open space subdivision, then. But, you know, not. Um, so, you know. Just have more houses than. The best interest of city in my opinion. And so I like having that, that sort of, okay, it's conditioned, this, this zone chain, we condition. On if you use open space subdivision. I want that, in my opinion.
Worst version.
Well, that, and that's what was recommended with that last one.
Yeah.
But. I wonder if that's a little different than what Nick is talking about though. Because you're, you're saying that. They would have to do an open space. They, they'd be forced to do an open space subdivision, not that they would have. It's almost the flip side. You, in, in your case, they have to go through this extra process, but, but what you're talking about, Brett, is we want to encourage that. We wanna encourage the open space subdivision. So if they're gonna do.
From which base is on R two?
Yeah. But. I think it's when we do that, because if we get the. You know, this, the more housing for the. For the housing. People. Right? And we give the open space. That's it, yeah.
Tom, Tom, obviously thinking about open space, you feel clear neighborhood inside everybody's. Boats and trailers, their backyard, so, so this is what a larger lot here for open space. That, it got me thinking, I thought. I don't think that's what we made by open space, this lot size. I think we made like a park or a hill or agriculture or something.
And that's the other issue, you know. What qualifies open space?
Yeah.
Yeah. And that's gotta be considered by, who's, who's gonna consider that? Uh, you said council or shit?
It's, it's, it's planning commission now. So planning commission, if you, there's, there's standards, right? We have, I'll scroll down to that, um.
So he's going to under, on, on space. Two, that's planning commission. That's why I still think. Because of this R two A, getting. Then maybe density is not the right word, maybe it's just smaller lots. You know?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and then is this open space to be really feeling that it's better city or just? Whatever, you know, maybe. That's why I kind of wanna see, explore the idea, could this just? Be an extra step in a legislative process, I don't know.
But it's, the city's given a property. Then who?
I don't want that either.
That's maintenance and care and that.
Well, and that has to go to city council if, if, if they're saying, hey, we wanna give it to the city. Like, we, we're not just gonna, you guys, you guys can't accept that gift. The, the city council has to. Because it comes with all the maintenance and.
As it should be.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So you, now you, what you could do is you could recommend. That, like, let's say they come in and they, they don't wanna give the open space to the city. And, and you see that it would be a benefit, you could recommend that they're required to give it to the city. And then it would be subject to city council reviewing that.
Could they be a conservation? Lot of. Open space.
Yeah, well, yeah, but you guys could approve that. Planning commission could approve that. The way it's currently. Mm-hmm. And that's, and it's currently written that way.
Yeah.
But. Yeah, but really. If they check the boxes. Then, uh, planning commission. Should approve it.
Yeah, yeah. I wonder, do you feel, you feel like if we add this additional piece of code where the setbacks have to match? Is that? Gonna essentially deter? The potential of having these next to a existing neighborhood, just because the numbers won't pencil?
Well, I think, but.
Nah, I don't think so.
It, the gift out there. Three lots or four and a halfs. Cause they could have put their bigger lots around the existing neighborhood and their smaller lots.
Yeah, it would have, it would have affected a. Actually, quite a few of the lots, the way this is currently written. It would have given them, those rear yard setbacks would have been increased by ten feet under the way this is currently written. So they would have had to either shrink the footprint of the home or. Or increase the lot size.
What if, uh, well, or.
It's if they're a budding. The subdivision, right? They weren't necessarily budding subdivision, they were gonna be a budding trail.
Yeah, that was the next question.
Those ones, you're right, you're right. So really, it's just the ones by that cul-de-sac that would have. Yeah.
One, one for the heat.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, yes.
Yep, no, that's a good point. So.
How wide is that? Was that about? Ten feet or something?
Like fifteen, twenty feet. Yeah, so.
Yeah, it's a broken man. Yeah.
The.
And the trip is ten feet, isn't it? Isn't it a nice, I went to a trip that feeds? Are they wider than that?
Um. That was twenty feet because there was also a. I mean, that particular design typically, typically it's like fifteen feet is what we require, but. I think this one was twenty feet because they had a canal and eat, the canal easement required twenty feet. So. It was twenty foot.
Was that? Would that emphasize at any point? In the meetings?
The trail?
The trail.
About like, there is a trail between your back fence and. This proposed neighborhood subdivision.
I don't, I don't know. Uh, so, I don't know if it was in that case.
I don't think it was.
This is their whole trail, right?
I don't know, it would be like, I don't know how my plan was communicated to the public that it turned up.
Yes. Yeah, no, a good point. Uh, something else that you could consider that's not in this current draft. If the, I mean, we have, we have the additional setbacks put in here, and I think naturally that will. Require, or they'll, they'd probably design larger lots where they have. Larger setbacks. If there is a concern that about. About, uh, smaller lots closer to larger lots. We could say that, okay, if it's close to this lot, it's gotta be within a range of. That amount. I mean, that, I think there's other ways to try to mitigate things. Then to send it through the legislative process and. Uh. I mean, I, I think. At the end of the day. Like. To, to Brett's point, it's like, what is the city trying to do here? Uh, are we trying to incentivize this to happen more often or, or less often? Um, do we want this to be kind of the default or? Something that's gonna be difficult and this arduous process that people are gonna have to go through. And I feel like the way it is right now, it's almost, it's relatively easy and the ben- and the ben- there's enough benefit there that it's almost been the default. Like, there's been more of these subdivisions. Since like twenty sixteen than standard subdivisions.
Open space?
Yeah.
And that was kind of one of the goals we had when we looked, when we, when we relooked at it was like, how do we set this up where it kind of is? Is the default where it would, it makes. It would be a terrible idea not to do that.
Unless you want a subdivision left, the cap is, which is fine.
Oh, yeah. Yeah. And we get those too. We get some, they're usually smaller. Usually the larger scale ones, they, they do, they either do P U D or open space subdivision. Cause there might not be a market for that many half acre lots.
Yeah.
Not anymore. Not sure in well, though.
They're.
Well, that's changing real quick.
Um, anyway, but wha- what do you guys think about this idea? Uh, it's, it's very prescriptive. Now, the lot sizes. And the minimum, minimum and average lot sizes and frontages. What do you think about the idea of just? Scrapping that? And allowing for.
This is how many you get.
Flexibility, yeah.
Like, here's your size, here's how many houses you get.
Yeah, but, but requiring the variation. So more focused on. Variation than really, it's more focused on. Uniformity now. Cause I mean, that's. At least in lot sizes, that's primarily what we're, we've seen with the ones that have been developed. The lot site, there is some variation, but, but, but they're pretty uniform, right? Um. So it's, it really, it's a different focus, if that's, if that's what we wanna go for.
Quality.
Yeah, and that, and that's. That's the same. In this one. You know, it might be one of those things that. Kind of, I, I mean, we, we can send this off. To, to get some feedback on it, um, but I just. And, and that would probably be good to do. I think regardless, it's gonna take a. We're gonna have to see, like, in the real world, how it works.
Yeah, I mean, look like, if, if this is the planning commission speaking, our job here is fairly straightforward.
Mm-hmm.
It, again, it just goes back to. What is, I guess it'll just be what is the council? What is, how do they wanna administer this? And it's their choice.
Mm-hmm.
Our job here is pretty straightforward. It's recommending this and then. We just gotta make sure it conveys to the council that. And they'll understand this, obviously. Once they get to R two A, this is gonna, this is an option and we should not stand in the way of.
And the metalper knows the size of the footprint, and so that, which means they know the size. The lot size they have had, so.
Yeah, I mean, it's math, right? I mean. Divided up and.
Yeah. So, okay, so you're saying, did I miss the part where? You're saying, given the lot size, this is just a number of units. Were we saying that?
None of that change.
None of that's saying, so, so it.
So give me a ten acre net. How many units are there?
So. Ten acres on, for an R two A.
After you take out open space, like, give me ten, what?
So net, your net acreage is ten acres and you're preserving. So you've got. About three lots per acre. So that gives you thirty is the base. Add forty percent to that, that's your, that's the maximum you're gonna see. So. What is that? Forty? Three lots or something like that? I mean, that's.
On how many billable acres?
On ten, on ten.
So you're taking out.
Not gross, net, on net.
Take out four for the open space.
Uh.
So that's fixed.
Oh, right, right. Yeah, six acres. Six, well, you wouldn't mind it. That, that's taking out the roads, because you're already at net. So that's six acres of net acreage. Um. You would, yeah, you get forty, forty-three.
Forty unit, forty-three, forty-five.
Yeah, so the density, I mean. The density doesn't change with this formula. It's just, it, it just requires more variation. And, uh. You might get sma- smaller lots, you might get three thousand square foot lots and nine thousand square foot lots. Instead of a bunch of five thousand.
Yeah.
If it's R two A.
Yeah.
But that goes across all the other ones as well, so. If you, if you're gonna go in this direction. Which I, I mean, I think is a good thing. I, I see some of these subdivisions and. Wouldn't be, wouldn't have been a bad thing if, if they would have had some more variation rather than just.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, after, I know the map probably wouldn't. Under the fields what we just saw, but. I just like the outer band, they just would have matched. What's around it and I think in, inside of that development grown nuts.
Mm-hmm.
I even talking to the, the.
People really care about what's in their backyard.
They do. Yeah.
Yeah, or behind their backyard, I should say, yeah. What about, I mean, I might have cut, cut you off, sorry, Nick, when you, you, about the legislative. Question, like, what? What do you guys think about that? Should we keep the process the same? Should we make it an overlay or?
I think an overlay is the way to go.
My favorite, just keeping it at this, like. Let's red tape. We, it. If we're required red tape to me that just says our ordinance is incorrect. Like, if you have confidence in your ordinance, then you shouldn't be worried, and you should just have it be admission.
They're doing that protects our top three. Goals, which is open space and. Variation of lot sizes and getting our, get our setback where you want.
Yeah.
As long as those big three, the big three are taken care of, why make it harder for everybody?
Yeah.
In my opinion.
Yeah. Yeah.
Again. At this level. Fine. As long as, I guess, um, yeah, yeah.
I think we can bring it up regardless of what's recommended, regardless of what's recommended. I think when we present that council, we'll at least say, hey, that's something that was discussed, that was considered. And they can deliberate on as well if they'd like to, but, but we can.
I just think that's just gonna. At that level of the legislative level. Um, that's just gonna be baked into that decision. Going to R two A. It just has to be.
Yep. Yeah, I mean, if you go to R two, before, before all this was changed, you go to R two, it's like. You knew it wasn't necessarily going to be half acre lots. You know?
So answer your question. For me first. I think the first one, I think should be included definitely. Yeah, encouraged to be added, uh, the second one.
The, sorry, what was the first one? Okay.
Public feedback from that, then I think that's good. On the variation of lot sizes. For me personally, I hear nor there. If we wanna see a variation of size, great, if we don't care. And the third one. I think personally administered.
Overlay administrative decision.
No, it's, it's, it's legislative. Yeah.
Basically kind of say this is a special zone and.
It's very, it'd be very similar to our PUD process. Yeah, no, it's. It's a zone, I mean, an overlay, it's an overlay zone, so it's, it's a zoning designation on top of whatever the underlying zone is, yeah. Okay. Any other feedback on this? I think. Um. Any tweaks or anything you think should be?
Do we?
Changed?
How do you think council wants to do this? Well, they want to see a real world. Uh, flat or something like this before they make a decision? Like, send this out.
I don't know. I don't know, I, I don't know if we have. Budget for that, that's the thing is, if we're gonna do that. We'd have to get a designer on board to draw something up hypothetical, unless you get AI, unless you get AI to do it.
And you're just looking at a single plot, right?
Yeah.
Every part is gonna be totally.
Yeah, that, that, that's the hard part about doing that is then they glam up, it's, it, then you tend to glam on to. What you like and what you don't like about that specific plan, and the next one's gonna be different, right? So I think it's just that idea, may- maybe we can. Find a few examples of neighborhoods or development that have a very variation of lot sizes. And, and show those compared to those that don't. Cause that might even, that might be a little bit more meaningful than a plat. I feel like even the fields development, we saw, you know, two dimensional lines on a paper. We didn't, no one really knows what that would have looked like.
That's true.
Cause it was never built. And so, but what, I, maybe what I could do is do a little bit of research. And look at. Um, I'll probably start with some. You know, just looking at line subdivisions that have been developed, see if I can find some that show some variation in lot sizes. And compare that, get some pictures of it, compare that to. You know, just these ones that. That don't.
I think that, I think the council's gonna want the variation to stay. I mean, if you pay attention to what they said. During those meetings, at least Nathan for sure was variation, variation. For. Gary.
Gary was more concerned about.
Yeah. Yeah, we'll see.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We're just recommending, yeah. Okay?
All right. Good there. Yeah, I'll do, I'll do a little more research so that. You can visualize this um, in some way and maybe send it out for feedback as well to some. Developers, some, really, it's, I would say it's the designers more than the developers that are gonna.
Somebody said in that meeting, they seem something similar to it somewhere, but I can't remember who said that.
Yeah, yeah, I'd like to have an example. Used to be able to send out an email to like every planner in the state through this listserv and APA got rid of it and I, it's. Now you put it up on a blog and like nobody sees it, so it's. Cause who's gonna read that blog? Like, three people might read it, but. I wish I could still do that, cause I, I'd like to send something out. I could at least to the planners I know in the valley and, and some others. To see if they have something baked in their ordinance on lot variation and what they've seen from it. Um, cause I'm not, I don't, I can't think of a specific example, it'd be nice to have a few.
So we, either with Gary or something.
Yeah.
Are we done with the, with this? Again, well, I'm just wondering, do you wanna talk about what open space is? How qualified, you know, we talked about, you know, talks about how we've got the three. Testing three requirements to be open space.
I think that's, that's definitely on the table, that's not something that has been discussed so far, so it's not what, what's within this draft, but. If you wanna talk about that. We don't require it to be fenced, but we are particular about what kind of fence they put in if. If it is fenced.
I'm not saying it should though. Actually, my biggest regret in my. The subdivision idea. Is that fence.
Is putting it up.
Well. Because it has to be maintained.
Yeah.
And. To all those owners. But there's a little section of that fence. Some, some stand, keep standing in its eyes, some don't. So if I were to change anything, I would have either not done a fence, like, hey, it looks so good. It's done. Still is good, but it's not like it was when I put it in. Spent a lot of money. Yeah. And I think, I know what's gonna be.
Yeah, that's subjective, I don't really like that, but. If you wanna, if you wanna come up with more objective standards for that, have at it, I.
Maybe it's still. But maybe there's something else that was, that would look good for thirty or fifty years. So I was wondering if that requirement. Yeah. Would have been a part of the debate. I agree. But, and I don't, it's not hard, obviously, it's the homeowners, ultimately do it. There's no way, there's no way, oh, HOA there, Cotton Woods is different. They have an HOA, so they have funds to, and they're dug fence. As they see.
Their former. It come down, but which one are you talking about that doesn't?
Meadow Creek, north of Cotton Woods, off thirty-eight fifty. There, thirty-eight fifty south, east side of the highway.
It's got a safe fence.
Are you talking about a fence along thirty-eight fifty or, or where? Oh, you fenced it all, all over, okay. Does the city require that? Or did you just do it?
You just did.
Okay.
Because it's hardly made.
So you, you regret what?
Yeah, it kind of sold it, sold it too.
Yeah.
I'm on the plan, I wanna, I wanna be a, a blue ribbon flagship and stuff. So I went to great expense and effort to make it look. What, you know, what it was.
Yeah.
And because Jim Johnson did the same thing over. And he was a final commission too, and he did his. So. I wanted to be nice, but that's my biggest regrets, that fence. Maybe I would have did a different fence, but.
To see her face.
I don't know, but we, we required to do a fence, it's gotta be.
Rural, at least around the open, if, if you're. You're fencing in the open space areas, and, and I've talked to the attorney about that, the way it's currently written. Yeah, if you're fencing it in, it has to be of rural nature. Now, that doesn't apply to a property adjacent to the open space. Um, and I think there was a little bit of ambiguity there because. I know.
Yeah, like my house.
I know there were some complaining in your neighborhood that those fences, oh, they should be this rural, and I, and that was actually the one I talked to the attorney about, and it's like. No, that's their fence, their property, if, if you're fencing in. The open space, like, let's say you put a fence out front along the street that wasn't. Then, then that would have to be rural, and, and really, you know, it typically isn't gonna apply much to. Parks, uh, more private open space that I think. That provision applies to if they've got a pasture or something, but. Right, you do, you do barbed wire. You totally do barbed wire, I would say yes to that.
The Buchanan's a little in right here, right?
Yeah, they've got a little tin, what, I, what are they, tin rope thing?
You know. Because it would look nice for. But that part probably doesn't, we don't even can, that's just.
You can if you want to, but.
That makes fiscal sense, but. Yeah, I mean. They're talking about open spaces and making them look nice, like, who would it be just to have them just a tree stand there? Yeah, we can do that.
Well, I mean, we could, we could say that if you.
We could.
Because how, how the city, eh, you know, by, and by, by ordinance, at least when it was, when that subdivision was done. Uh, you had to keep a fence up by ordinance. You had to keep it, but is it gonna go down and? And, and, and place that? Not, not. But, but they, they could have one, you see, the HOA, they spend an active energy. Maintain the fence.
Yeah.
Uh, versus, you know, thirty people.
Yeah.
If you would like to do a wood fence.
Right. I guess, I guess maybe a counter argument to that is. We're, are we only gonna do that here and nowhere else in the city? Right? A- anywhere else, they can put whatever fence they want. But in, in these specific subdivisions, we're gonna allow that, or we're gonna require that, I would say at minimum, we need to do that in like a PUD as well. Um, which those all have HOAs anyway, but. I guess that, that would be my only kind of counter argument is, are you singling out these, or how are they different than the standard? We can. We can, if we've got, yeah, but I just think it makes sense, I have a good reasoning. And I just see a lot of bad fences all over town. Um, yours would probably look nicer than. But ma- maybe to your other question, Brett. On the open space. Uh, standards, I don't know how, how much we need to dive into it tonight, but. Uh.
So you have to meet three.
Yeah, yeah.
And did this last? What were the three?
So. So it was contiguous land. It was agricultural land. It was pedestrian access. Cause they had the trail. And then. I don't, I know we counted one more, I can't remember if we counted significant areas of natural landscape or. Uh. Recreation space, recreation spaces. It was a little goofy on that one, because yes, it would go to the city. And be used, but not, not the way it's currently defined here, so I mean, they met at least three, I think the fourth was maybe a bit of a stretch.
Doesn't city, once the ci- if the city, if the city. Ops in to take ownership of any open space. Do they have the power to sell that?
The city, yeah. Yeah.
Like, I think it's good that they could.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, I don't, there's nothing in, in here that says they couldn't.
So they could sell it to the.
For any, and, and another use.
I think that's, we should do that. But, but, but. No, no, I don't, I think, I think what's designated as open spacing forever should be that.
Right, yeah, it's, it's, it's designated that on the plat. Yeah.
Well, I, I'm, I'm just. Maybe, maybe there's a piece of open space that city wants to, they're like, you know what, we're tired of maintaining this, let's sell it or give it. To the owner, just the neighbors, to some. They, they own it, they still have.
Yes. I haven't carried that.
Agreed to. Cause I hate to see. Should we be selling them? But if they sell them, then you. Those are some of these kind of built houses. That kind of defeats the purpose of. The development of the property, the reason that gave you an open space is because that was one of the agreements. Well, you're talking about, I think different things, pocket park isn't open space.
It is over on eight hundred.
So we did, uh, the city did that, right? We sold, we sold some property for two lots on eight hundred west. It wasn't recorded that way.
Just the city owned it.
The city owned it, I don't, I don't know, I don't know all the details, we, we went through it with the attorney and there was no.
There's a small one. And it's just a little park, it's not. And it's all for the city.
Now.
Now.
Or developing.
They can, they can sell. How much, ten, fifteen years down the road, there, you're gonna find those agreements.
They're recorded?
Yeah.
They're recorded, that is very helpful.
It's recorded, but. Planners change.
Mm-hmm. I mean, at the end of the day, the council probably could approve. Approve whatever. They, they could, they could remove the conservation easement, unless it's.
Cause it's not designated, it's conservation, it's just.
It's open space, so they, they could, they could take an action to remove it if they. It's open space, so they, they could, they could take an action to remove it if they wanted to, take additional bedding, but. You couldn't just sell it, like you'd have to. Change something to. Which, yeah, I don't, I don't know if that's good profit, practice, although forever is a long time. You know?
It's a little tricky too, cause then, like if, if the city sells it to a private. You don't get a rainbow. It would have to be a concert, it would have to be recorded to the conservation. For property taxes, um.
And that piece over there, maybe two acres.
Yeah.
If that.
So if some private person says on by that. Not needed or. Recognizes a conservation area, right? You're just getting the full. You don't get any exemptions on that, it's just.
So you're defeating the purpose of the. Original approval of that neighbor.
Yeah, yeah.
Which means that the city just entered your real estate.
To sell it.
If city has responsibility of. First, first moment space that it manages. I can see where they might say, look, we don't manage this anymore, it's not, you know, but want, wanna.
Keep it as.
What we want to maintain is open space, but we want to. Let. Give or sell to adjacent property. To increase their loss of these. Cause it's a benefit to the, maybe older, right?
Yeah.
For the value of the property.
There's a, there's a piece of property right now that we've talked about that, that's in this subdivision. One, it was one of the first conservation subdivisions approved out here on. Near like Tenth West. It was one of the neighborhood nonprofit ones and there, there's an open space there. But the city's kind of like, ah, what do we do with this? There's a trail along it. But there's, there's an adjacent open space that's just. It's just kind of natural. Space, but. Not a whole lot of use there and we thought like, maybe someone, maybe, maybe someone should just. You know, we should just graze. Animals, animals graze back there or something and. And at that point. Maybe it should just be private.
Yeah.
Right.
So what if, what if you sell? What if, so what if they buy it and then they put it be used?
That's what they can, we, it was still restricted, it was still strict, restricted as opens, as and protected.
Yeah.
As open space, so they just had a. But somebody maintains.
Kind of like, uh. There's a house right here. It's kind of like that where they have. The adjacent lot, but it.
Oh, the one to the. So anyway, um. It's like, it's supposed to be a water retention. Something or. Water retention, yeah, that, yeah, so it's not that, it's north of, north of there, there's an open field. Next to. The trail continues to the north. And goes up by, there's a, there's a church there. And. Yeah, Nibley Gardens and, um. Anyway, we've, we've struggled with what to do with that space and even Nibley Farms, we're kind of. Looking at and, uh, what's, what's the city actually going to do with this space? Even though that one's a lot more recent, but. Um, ma- maybe back to Brett's question, do you think? These six. Uh, parameters. Make sense, since, since there varies in natural landscape, contiguous land, agricultural land, buffering. Pedestrian access, recreation space. We took out, there, there used to be seven, we took out, uh, stormwater.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's a good hook. Which. My interpretation of that was that we can still count stormwater basins, but you don't get credit. By virtue of it being a stormwater basin, if that makes sense, if, if there, if it's something else on top of a stormwater basin, fine. But you don't just get credit for that. So. It's stormwater, you gotta maintain. Yeah, but. Which I think that was a good move to take that out, that, that was an amendment a little while back. I don't know if I have any. Specific, uh.
This staff.
Yeah, and then, and then make the recommendation to the planning commission. And you could disagree, be like, nah, I don't think this is, I don't think those areas are significant enough. I mean, there's some sub- subjectivity for sure, but I, I feel like it's written. Pretty good, um. You know, we could, we could be more. Yeah. So you could have, you could have, even with that fields one, you could have said. We don't, we don't. Yeah, we don't think. That. It meets the standard for whatever reason. But just like anything else, it's just that this is a little bit, a little bit more subjective than.
Yeah.
Numbers, lot sizes and. I think they're pretty good. Oh, there's a, there's a typo. And change that right now. Still says rural conservation subdivision. Yeah, we do. Yeah. I don't know if we. I'm. Love our standards, but like sometimes I think it might not hurt, it might not be a bad thing to have a natural surface trail. I know you have, you have one and. Yeah.
In my opinion. So I said to use. Concrete for most of it. In that back, the back. Hundred feet or whatever that is, two hundred feet.
Yeah. Yeah, for maintenance. For maintenance, yeah. Yeah, so we do require that now, and that's a good point, cause we have one, we have one on the edge of town on the west side, sixteen hundred west. And yeah, that's, that's kind of been a nightmare to maintain as well. Yeah. Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the standard. And it's. I think ten, the way it's written currently, uh, interactive transportation plan is ten feet is the default. You can't go down to eight feet or up to twelve feet, depending on what you think the usage is going to be. So a lot of them. Have been eight feet, um, but there's some ten foot wide. It could be either. We don't. Not, not on, not if we require it as part. I mean, you could do a natural trail, I guess, in a, in a subdivision. Uh, but not if. It's required by, by the city for, if, you know, it's in our master plan, if it's in our master plan, we don't have any natural surface trails in our master plan, so. I, I guess they could, they could do it as part of the design, um, and it would, it would be subject to review, they, they could. Uh, but it wouldn't be one of the master plan trails. And then the city, if they were giving it to the city, we'd have to agree to take it on. But let's say if it was an HOA maintaining it, I suppose that they could. Yeah.
So I could, we could dig up our asphalt trail in the neighborhood and say it's all natural.
I don't. I don't think you could because, uh, it's a. It's a.
The city has easement on it.
Yeah.
That's it.
And that's how it was approved. In the subdivision, so. Yeah. I think we'd bug you about it if you did it, for sure.
Okay. How do we, so do we want to move forward, just allowing Levi to flesh out the details and then? I guess getting it ready for two, do we need a final? Recommendation at some point, probably.
Yeah, so this is still just a workshop, so this needs, yeah, so this needs to come back to public hearing. So that would likely be ready by the next meeting, uh, which is November thirteenth. I don't see any reason why not. Yeah. Okay.
And that is just.
It's really just.
That would just be saying, we're. Going to discuss as a commission to recommend. Just with whether, so our recommendation as, as. Written would be that this would just be an administrative process, correct?
Yeah, but you can. I guess you still have another chance if you want to mull it over, because this isn't going to the city council yet.
Right.
If you wanted the next meeting, say, no, I think we should amend this and do this. You can still do that before it goes to the council. You're talking open. Open, uh, public hearing? Mm-hmm, yeah, so you have the public hearing, but then you have a discussion and consideration of, of the item. And in, if you want to continue it, if you want to say, make amendments to it, you could still do that.
We don't all have to agree either.
Yeah. And let's move forward.
Okay, um, then we'll move on to the next, are we, we done discussing? Okay, move on to, I think number five. On to the next agenda, which is, uh, workshop for fence regulations. Levi?
All right. Uh, so some issues have come up with, with fences, uh, we've kind of identified these. Partly through enforcement and partly through. Uh, just reviewing fences, we see a lot of fences, right? And, and just seeing how, some shortcomings of the ordinance. So just wanted to discuss some of these with. Planning commission and get your opinion on them. Again, before, we don't have a draft ready, but just to see if. Uh. Just to get your direction on these, so. The things wanted to discuss is height and treatment of fences along trails. So within our ordinance. And, and really, this is the issue that kind of spurred the whole. Uh, this, this coming up, so along public trails. Uh, we don't allow fence, opaque, solid fences. Greater than four feet, if, once you get above four feet, it has to be seventy-five percent transparent and you go up to six feet. I'll show you some examples on the next page and we can talk a little bit about. You know, how, how we want to go. If we want to make any changes to that. Uh. We've noticed that. I think the intent along trails. Of. You know, in, improving visibility and, and just. I think the idea of, of that provision was to create, so you don't have kind of this back alley type. Uh, environment where, you know, you, you don't have as many eyes on, on the, on the trail, I. I feel like it, and Tom, Tom. Ag- agreed with this as well, I'm talking with him, that along our streets. When you have these, you know, long, particularly when they're long stretches of six feet, sometimes seven feet fences. Solid fences, it just kind of creates this, this. Tunnel environment that. You know, really, this was originally meant to be for, as a kind of a crime, crime prevention issue where. You've got a lot of areas without eyes on the, on the street. So. Maybe we consider similar provisions along, not just along trails, but along streets, you know, the, they, streets, all our streets have sidewalks. So that's something to consider. And it's particularly in the backyards, because we don't allow six foot fences in front yards anyways, but. It, when you go along twelve hundred west, a lot of, I mean, thirty, two hundred south and some stretches there. You've got a lot of backyards facing. The, the street and, and these tall fences, anyway, so. That's something to consider. Um, wanted to review a little bit, we have a provision to try to preserve some visibility on the corners. Um, but. I'll, I'll show you at least one example where I feel like the, the ordinance has some shortcomings there. Um, agricultural fences, so we've gotten some requests from people that have. Large. You know, large lots, really, they, they're, they're using their front yard as a pasture. And we only allow four foot fences in the front yard area, at least up to the setback line. Uh. But a lot of agricultural fences a little taller than four feet. They're not solid fences, a lot of times they're three rail fences, or maybe they're, maybe they're. Or, or maybe they're a, um, barbed wire fence or something like that, but. They're a little taller, yeah, they're five feet, a lot of, so. Should we consider those, um? It almost seems a little silly in some of these locations to tell them they, they can only put a four foot fence when they're putting those three rail fences up and. Oh, well now, can't, I can't leave my, I, I can't keep my horse in, so I gotta set it back for, or thirty feet. Um. And then, this next one, this relates a little bit to the issues we've run into with enforcement. It is very. It's not fun to tell people they've got to rip their fences out. I've done it, our code enforcement person has done it. And we're running into this issue where, uh. Not only are people building fences, you know, they don't have a permit and then we tell them, oh. You, you gotta have a permit, and by the way, you did it wrong, so you've got to tear this fence out and redo it, but. In some cases, people get a permit. But we don't have an inspection, like you do for a building permit, we just, we just approve it. And if there's not, if there's an issue later, it becomes a code enforcement issue, so what we're suggesting, and it is more time. But that they would have to, once the fence is complete, someone come out and actually. Uh, measure the fence, okay, it's the right height, it's what you said you're gonna do. Okay, check off. So, so that's, that's something we feel. Maybe should be considered, and then. Yeah, we've talked about it, yeah, we think so. It might actually be the code enforcement officer that does it and. They're doing it at that time instead of by surprise months later and. So, yeah, we, we. Yeah, yeah, it's just a scheduled thing.
About just. Make them and get a permit to, to require that they.
We do require that. But sometimes they don't build what they say they're gonna build.
But then that's where you. This is what you told us.
And we can do that.
Do that, so now, this is why you're failing this thing.
Yeah, and that's what we, that's what we currently do.
Yeah.
But I think it's helpful if. A lot of people have contractors build their fences. And I think it's. I think it's helpful if their contractor says, oh, I'm gonna build the fence and this is what it's gonna look like. And maybe the homeowner isn't paying a whole lot of attention, they build something a little bit different. The city identifies that, by the time they do, that contractor's long gone. So now the home, now, now they expense on the homeowner.
Yeah.
And. So. I think it's, it's just a way for it to. Get caught earlier if it's a problem.
Is it actual?
Yeah, and, and honestly, the inspection would be quick, it'd be really quick and we. We just, we get a fair number of these, but it's not like. We're, we're not inundated, you know, it's not like it would, so.
What point would you do the inspection?
Once they're done with the fence. I think. Yeah, I don't know, I don't know what.
Did you do it after the poles were?
Maybe, but I think, I see on some, some next, uh, slides here that it's not just the poles, it's the. It's the treatment of the fence and it's op- opacity and. And that's just something to consider, so I'm, I'm just gonna show some images just to, so I can display what I'm talking about. So this is one issue we've run into. Oh, oh, and you know what, uh? Did I not put it on here? The other thing I wanted to add, I thought, I thought it was on here. What if, I mean Brett, you said you put in a fence. What if, at least along trails, we require the developer to put the fence in? And then we can inspect the whole thing. Um, at one time. That's another option. I think the only issue with that is some people don't want a fence. And. So. Right. Right, right, so do we require, do we require a gate? Yeah, so that, that's something else to consider. Is if, if this is just too much of a headache, I know some cities have, have done that. And we actually do require a fence. Along trails that are at the end of cul-de-sacs, but only there. We don't on any other trails. So we require the developer to put a fence in, in conjunction with that trail. That complies with our ordinance, and most of them have been putting in four foot fences, because they're less expensive than a six foot, I guess. But. But. That's the only place, that's the only time that we require a fence. Uh. For whatever reason, that's just how it evolved, that it's what, at the end of those cul-de-sacs, we have those little trails.
Hmm.
So, just to show you, demonstrate some of these issues, so. This fence on the right. Is about four feet tall. Two feet above, this fence on the left is close to five feet. Not compliant. And these ones are all over the subdivisions, cuz what we saw happen is, I don't know if it's the same contractor put them in. Or they saw their neighbors and hey, I won't mind to look like theirs and theirs is fine. It's a patchwork of, I mean, you kind of see as you look down the line and on this part of the subdivision. That you, it goes up and down. Uh, but there's another part that's a longer stretch, that's the same thing, it's like this.
Who's, so whose point of view? Are we assuming actually cares about this? Is it the person walking on the trail? Or? I guess, why do we care, is my question?
It it's back to that that point I made, uh, uh, it was, it was originally, I feel like intended as a kind of. A crime prevention thing, because. If you, if you have a solid wall where you can't see over it, so people can't, people can't see into the trail. Then maybe, maybe there's things happening back there that. They should, yeah, it shouldn't happen, so. That's part of the idea.
My assumption is people act to think the opposite, they're like, I just want privacy, I don't want.
Most property.
Be able to see into my backyard.
Most property owners want privacy.
Yeah.
We we tell them to do this, they don't wanna do it, but. I think. I think we need, it's a balance, right? Figure out what the city. What what this, what the city wants for the public space as well. Uh, I I I think.
Just think the existence of the trail is pretty often why they have a care if there's a six foot fence. That's not seen very well.
I mean, it it does. Like I've gone along some of these trails and I think on top of just the crime prevention, I I think it. When, it just doesn't look nice, I mean, it's kind of. There's less variety. Yeah, it looks like an alley instead of an, it's less open, right, um? So we could move, we could change it to five feet. Yeah. I, so, so I, I walked along this and just personally, like, you know, I've walked this back and forth. I don't see a huge issue with this. Five foot fence, I, the other thing I kind of wanted to do, if we wanted to really dig into it. I feel like it's less standard to have the four foot with the two foot above for some reason than to have the one foot. As far as what they ca- what they carry, that's part of the reason we're seeing that treatment pop up, but. Yeah, in the, in this, in this case, yeah. But we could just to to Nick's point, just scrap it and say, yeah. I think it's fine, like.
Maybe you go a little more for the, cuz if you're walking down that trail, you know, I I know my wife likes to walk. Trails and, and she's nervous at night, she also, she always walk with a friend. Would that make someone, if if you feel like you're just got six feet and both sides of it. In a ten foot. Span with, that's. You know, sort of stuck in that thing.
Yeah, I don't know.
I don't know what my answer is, but I, I like it.
So would we say five?
If you guys are good with that, we can, we can roll with that.
Or maximum.
Five foot, five foot maximum for opaque, for an opaque fence. No.
No, if they put one in on a trail.
Then it has to be five feet?
Yeah. Is that, and I guess the question is, is that uncommon, like, can you, can I go to caro fans today?
I don't, I don't know if we wanna say this is what ha- it would have to be.
We're just complaining about this variation. Or we're, we're considering it anyways.
Yeah, I don't.
Do we want uniformity or do we want chaos?
I don't know. I think it, I think it's fine. Yeah, yeah. It's a good point, I mean, we're not, we're not. We're not regulating the architecture of the home. So why should we be, we have, we have a max, we have maximum heights. Yeah, it could, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and there, there's a few, there's one, I don't have it here, but there's one that's just. Uh, rail, there's a, there's a rail fence on another stretch of this, and it looks nice. But it's completely, it's almost completely transparent, right?
Like, we have some minor.
Yeah.
We're okay with that.
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, really, we're okay with. We really only care about opacity, we don't care about the treatment, the the way it's currently written. We don't care if it's chain link, we don't.
Now, is there? Rule. Be based on proximity of the trail?
That's probably something we could clarify.
Feet and I'm right next to a trail, but I'm like fifty feet from.
So that, so that's probably something we could clarify, that was, that was kind of a case. Study again, Mount Vista, the, the way the ordinance is currently written is if it's adjacent to a park area. Then it it doesn't have that restriction. So, that trail, it's not just a trail, it's, it's an open. It's a private park, right, the one by your house?
Yeah.
So that doesn't count, but there's.
Other than public.
Well, it's not just public, it's not just, i- it it could be private. It's whether it's a trail corridor versus a park.
Open park.
And there, there's a little, there's a little bit of, we could probably clarify that, maybe we say if it's. Forty feet or narrower or something like that.
I could see you like where this is, what is this, five feet or something from the edge of the trail?
Yeah.
So pass anything, but twenty feet, didn't care. If it's a six foot fence, if the, there's a twenty foot grass distance between the edge of the trail and the. You know what I mean? That makes sense.
So you're saying how far the trail is from the fence rather than, rather than the width of the corridor itself?
I think that's, yeah, the answer is yes to both of those.
Isn't that a two foot? Upper between.
The way it's currently written, it.
Well, if that's a six foot tall fence, just laid over, that's probably four or five feet, right?
Yeah.
From the edge of the trail itself.
Oh.
Hmm. Yeah, so.
It beats cleaning dog poop out of your yard from somebody else.
So, so, I, is that a city, is that a current city trail?
Hmm.
Why, why? Why wouldn't we put that asshole away to piss that piss?
Why wouldn't we?
Why wouldn't we just to to maintain that?
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's.
Doesn't it feel weird? If you did that, wouldn't that feel weird?
A little less elbow room, but.
Yeah.
It's a pain to maintain. It is.
We're talking, we're talking about feelings. But that's some asphalt trail.
You need at least probably a foot buffer just for maintenance anyway, like we require that with with sidewalks and. I I I would say you at least need a foot, and at that point, I don't know if a foot or four feet is much different to maintain, but.
Yeah, you're still. You're still mulling.
Yeah.
And there, that's also we.
How much more is it just to put in gravel?
We.
Yeah.
Why, why you don't?
Doesn't that, doesn't that just feel weird to like walk, I mean, you just. You're literally like rubbing shoulders on somebody's fence as you're walking along the trail, doesn't that feel weird?
If it was wider, how how wide that is?
Eight feet.
But I'm just, that's, I I hate.
I hear you, I see what you're saying, from just, yeah, maintaining.
I think it's. I think that's something to, that we need to. Figure out for trails, is the landscaping and what do we, what do we expect along these trails, cuz. But I don't know if that's, I don't know if that's. What's on the agenda tonight, I think that's a little bit broader than.
Yeah.
Fences, uh, but I think that's a good point, I I think. What we, what we require, what, um. For trails and these corridors, um, they do. It like. They become maintenance nightmares. And.
But if you did shoulder a little word, you pushed it down.
We typically don't.
Yeah, good, we do.
We do?
Yeah.
Should we be doing that?
When we get. Now Vista?
We don't.
I think so.
We think so, what?
I think you should be doing it.
Will we get trouble? No.
No, we're, I'm not sure.
No, we maintain it, I just, we don't hear the snow in it.
So, okay. Just show more pictures, they did get a pretty uniform here, but just. Okay, I think maybe we'll come back with the five foot as a compromise on the, on the, on that last point. Okay, so this one. This on a corner, it's a new fence that went in. We have a forty foot clear view triangle requirement, you can't build above four feet in the four foot clear view triangle. This fence is just outside of that. Because this, uh.
The buffer between the sidewalk.
Right. But this pole here, this is stop sign, so you stop here.
Then you can roll.
You gotta roll up, pat, you know, you can't really see around here if there's like kids coming down the sidewalk. And then, and then you gotta, you gotta roll up to see traffic coming. I I think that's an issue.
Did tree camp?
Trees, yeah.
The one with my ridge line. It's not ready back in the house, and you gotta roll almost out to see.
Right. So. But with, so what, what, I I talked to Tom about this issue. And what he suggested, and again, this is one additional layer of review. But. Uh. Yes, we have this clear view triangle as a minimum, but on top of that, it needs to meet, um. Visi- like, there there's standards within Ashdod, the. Association of State Highway Transportation Officials on on, uh. Visibility, and depending on the curvature of the roadway, you know, you gotta see a certain distance down the road. And so what he suggests, what he suggested is, I said, well, I, I mean, I review these. I'd have to get educated on that, or I'd have to send it to you, and he's like, oh, you you can just send them to me. So it'd require the engineer, if it's on a corner, to review a fence permit to say, oh, yeah. You're, you meet visibility center, cuz there's a lot of factors here that come into play and it's hard to write it in ordinance. There's already a standard written. To refer to. So we might. Suggest adding that, if, I don't, if, that's. Cuz I don't, I don't like this, but.
Yeah, especially at the stop signs right there.
Yeah.
I mean, how many times are you driving around the city and there's a big tree? There's one that as I exit my neighborhood every day, I'm like.
These are pretty common.
I I can't even see, I'm scared to death, I'm gonna hit a kid every day.
Yeah, and I think our, we do have in our landscaping standard, the tree does have to be a certain distance from the corner, but people. Build them, but, you know, or plant them.
Even don't know where your friends, my friends is at. Where his house is existing and then ridge line built around him. Has a retaining wall, like. And and you can't, the stop sign behind the retaining wall.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, anyway.
Yeah, for fence, for fence.
It's on a corner. And then here's. So if it doesn't, if they, if they can't get a certain side distance, we would say, okay, by a cer- you gotta. I I mean, to meet, to meet that, you would, you would have to set that back and, you know, drop it down to four feet or whatever for.
Okay.
Three and a half feet, it might be three feet, cuz the national standard is actually four and a half, uh, three and a half feet. For visibility, not four. It might be a little bit more restrictive, but, or they would have to. Fence it separate, like they could, they could fence it six feet, but they'd have this other area that might be fenced with a. I mean, if they had a dog pen or something in there, but, I don't know. Right, yeah. When we, we use, we we didn't used to allow six foot fences along. The street, like side yard fences.
Like this one?
We loosen that up, uh, I think back in twenty eighteen, you might have been here, Brett. Um. So, there's, there have been more new fences with that six foot. Treatment, um. And then this is one of those agricultural fences, there's a lot of them, these are about five feet tall. Three rail, like. Does anyone see this as a problem? Along.
Could like it, yeah.
The the top. The, the no tall fence was for visibility, right?
So.
Yeah. But like this kind of. That's a non-issue, right?
Yeah.
This is, how tall is that?
It's about five feet. I think so, yeah. But technically, if he came in today with a fence permit application, I would say, ah, you gotta drop that down to four feet.
Really?
Hmm. Unless we change it. Unless it, unless it was his side yard, but if it's his front yard. Then he'd have to drop it. If it's his side yard or rear yard, he could do it. Yeah.
It's so we say, it's maybe okay, if five feet and you're doing three, three or four rail, two or three.
Yeah, maybe, yeah, we should have to articulate how that, or if it's, if it's a certain. Opacity, I don't know if this is eighty percent or ninety percent.
Yeah.
Yeah, right, but they, I think the point of it is a visibility. That you're, when you're pulling out on, you know, the driveway or something, you can see. So.
You. I don't see an issue. Visibility.
Yeah, so we need to craft it some way that. And I don't, I don't know, I like, I like the three rail fences, I don't know if I like a. Six foot chain link fence out in the front yard. So. You gotta think of kind of worst case scenario too, right? Cuz if we just, if we just say, oh, it needs to be transparent, okay, yeah, there's my six foot.
With razor wire.
Yes. So maybe we say, if you go to five feet, if you go above four feet, if you go to five feet, you gotta be something. Something a little bit, maybe a. Three rail fence or a, I don't know. Three rail fences are allowed or. May- maybe there's some other treatments that would be.
Um, what's the, um. The little sidewalk, do you know where Nick DeSilva lives?
Hmm.
There, how long is that little sidewalk, and so those people have to put in a four foot fence right there? Even though.
The developer.
This is, this is the whole trail at the end of the cul-de-sac thing, that thing, what is that even, is that even a hundred feet? Is it a hundred feet or so?
Maybe.
We may put in a four foot fence or that.
The developer was required to, yes.
Four foot fence?
It could be, it could be four feet in the front yard, if they chose to, they could have done four feet with. Two feet transparent, once it got to the. The front plane of the house to the very back, they could have done that, and and the property owner can do that if they want to. But, um.
That's just the.
They just have to put something in that meets our requirement.
On this sidewalk here.
Well, I guess it's a time for a trade.
Developer had to.
You will four foot with the.
With disability. With a disability.
You could do that, yeah.
Maybe.
Well.
The requirement is just put. Here, the, the requirement is just put in a fence, it's not what kind of title fence is just put in.
It needs, it needs to be a fence that meets our standard, and four foot men are standard, that's what they put in.
But that's why my question is, because it's along a trail, does it have to be, it can, on the max can be four plus the visibility?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the trail's like a hundred feet long.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Which is just a link to their lobbies.
Yeah. Yep.
And that trail's managed, well, this is the end of a.
Yeah.
Of that, makes sense to me, but. I don't know.
It's hard to have a code that needs every little difference.
Yeah, I mean, I, I.
It is, but I don't know, these are just some issues that we've run into, so.
Yeah.
To the left.
Any other, any other comments? We can.
I have another question, does the fence permit fire?
Two years.
Is that new?
No. Uh, I don't think that's new. Uh, pull up the code. Yeah. As long as I've been here, I think it's been in there, I don't think we've changed that. Yeah, it might need to submit a new one, it's free. Oh, I guess the one other thing, just, the fee, it, it is baked into the ordinance that it's. It's a no fee for a fence permit. I think that's by design, cause you don't, you want people to actually get them.
You don't wanna be punitive.
But, but what we're suggesting is. To allow city council to impose a fee if they so choose, I. I don't know if the thirty dollar fee is gonna. Deter anyone from getting a permit, um. Yeah, right. It's weird that it's the only thing that we say by statute, it's free, like.
I mean, you have to, I have to do the paperwork, you got to put all the stuff.
Yeah. It, it takes, it, yeah, it costs money to review. So what we suggested is just to say that it's, uh, based on the fee schedule and. Um, and then the city council can decide if they wanna charge a fee or not.
I mean, if you're dropping.
What's thirty bucks, yeah, even fifty bucks, I don't know.
That's on Thursdays?
All right. Any other comments on fences before we come back with, these are just some of the issues we wanted to bring up?
I like the five feet.
Yeah.
That's a good compromise.
Cause it, it didn't look bad, but they used that, that black on white, which is. Makes it more transparent, especially the wall on one.
I, I did think, just, just for your own sake, is staff. Um, just, you know, at some point you have to tell them, they can pass it out. Just for your own sake, maybe, okay, here's the rules for your fence. But we're good, we, the day you start, or you, you know, like. Wh- when you, your foundation, when you're building a house, you gotta have, uh, inspection. Before you put those footies in, you're gonna have inspection, so you don't build your house in the wrong spot.
Yeah.
Maybe before you start digging holes.
Yeah.
We got, we're coming, we got a line, so we can review everything with you, confirm all the issues, just for your own sake.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess he, it gives you an opportunity to talk it through, even, even though you can't see everything.
That's just my.
My issue is, is my neighbor next to me, the last kicking. The survey marker and pounded away into the ground, well, I don't know where the front yard. The property line is, I know proximity, but I don't know really where it is, so somebody's putting a fence on the side yard. Do they really know where the property line is?
We don't, that's, that's, that's the hard part about that, is we're not surveyors, right? So. So it's up to, it's up to. Yeah, the height of the fence, if you're telling me it's on your property line, I'm taking your word for it.
I mean, you can't get in this.
Legal.
But the location, I mean, there could be a red flag where. Like, for example, if it, if it's a front yard and, and, like, you know, you, you can, you can tell. Based on where the sidewalk is, where the front yard begins and ends, cause you can measure that, um, generally, but. But, yeah, the, is this on your property line or someone else's property line? We, we don't wanna get involved with that.
You, you do have to.
Yeah.
But even when it curves.
Yeah, it's. It'll generally follow. Follow that, but anyway, okay, well, we'll come back with some, some stuff to consider, unless there's anything else with fences you want us to. Change, things you don't like, things you like.
Do, does that have to be a big plan?
Temporary, you're talking temporary fences and, I think. We might, I think that's something we should clarify, temporary fences, that's a good point. The way it's written now, any fence technically requires, now is that really enforced? Because think of a construction site that has, I mean, right next door to us, they've got a fence going around, like, we probably should treat. Temporary fences differently, and what, yeah, what, what's the length of time, what, what? We need to define what that is, don't just say, oh, yeah, temporary fences are fine, cause that temporary fence could be there for twenty years.
Yeah. Okay, anything else? Okay, okay, um, you good there?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, we'll move on to the last item on the agenda, which is staff on action.
Yeah, so, the next meeting is November thirteenth. We're, we're also planning to do a general plan, open house before the meeting. Probably an hour, hour and a half before. Uh, they, they.
This is a, like a public hearing kind of a thing?
Yeah, yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be just a, just an open house, so we'll have poster boards and people can come in and talk to us. And then after that, we'll likely, hopefully, we, we're ready at this point, I need to check with the consultant, we're ready. To present the plan and have a public hearing. Um, I don't want necessarily the, that to be the only time that the planning. Like, the planning commission shouldn't make a decision that night, but, uh, just hear it, consider it, talk about it. Hear the public, and then it would come back the next meeting, um. And maybe, maybe at that meeting you'd be ready, maybe you'd need another meeting as well, but I don't, I want, um. Like, especially where we're having the public come and gi- give comments. We wanna have some time to incorporate anything we've heard before it gets pushed to city council. So, anyway, just a heads up, if you, if you can, if you want to come a little early. Um, engage with anyone in the public that, that's gonna be here on that. Or, probably five, yeah, probably give about an hour and a half before the meeting. Uh, maybe November thirteenth. If you're able to be here, that would be great. Uh, next week is Cash Summit, if any of you. Are able or willing, or would like to go to any of it, let me know, it's on Monday and Tuesday? No. But there is an evening session on Monday, if that's helpful. Um, so, there's a tour throughout the day, and then there's kind of a dinner, and then there's an evening session. And wha- I know Will Summercorn's coming for that one, he'll have.
Yeah, um.
I did, but I can, I can sign you up. Yeah, if you, I, I can, I can, if you want, I could sign you up just for that portion, and then, and then, uh. Send you a reminder, Monday, the twenty, what is that, twenty seventh?
Yeah.
It's coming up really soon. So Brett, Monday, anyone else? Want to attend the Cash Summit, let me know.
I'd like to, I can.
Okay, all right. Uh. Brett and I just attended the, uh, Utah Land Use Institute Conference. But I think we were both online for that one, that was interesting, a lot on housing policy.
On Hoover City.
Yeah, yeah, different case studies and.
Is this their, their zoning, that they're, or city downtown?
Uh, I think Heber, if I recall, they're talking a lot about annexation, there was a lot about annexations too. And the, the state, there, I think there's a push to revamp annexations, I don't feel like we have the issue. In Nibley, but a lot of cities say no to annexations, and, um.
Just because of the.
They don't want. They just don't, yeah, they just, for whatever reason, they don't, they don't want growth and. Yeah, there's that too. Yeah, yep, yeah, and in some cases, in some cases, what happens is they, they won't annex that property. Well, what do they do? They start forming their own city, right? That, let's. Let's start, uh, they actually have these things called preliminary cities now, that really, the. And now, this is just recent legislation, the developer, I think you need like three property owners or something to start. The process of becoming a city, nobody's there, yeah. Because the city's not playing nice.
Yeah.
So it gives them an option. Anyway, so we, it was an interesting training, uh, Troy was able, you went to the APA Utah Conference. Couple weeks ago, so. Yeah, anyway. Yeah, that's all I got.
Sure, you have anything for us? What do you think about fences?
I don't have a fence and I really. Come to the trunk or treat, October thirtieth from four to six, lots of candy, and bring your kids and grandkids. Mm-hmm, yeah, that'll be. It's gotten bigger, there'll be the gaga pit, um, come to our third annual soup off. Nibley City staff does that, it's like a big potluck, but it's really good food. I've talked to Levi into being brain borscht the last two weeks. November sixth, it's at noon, so just pop on over for lunch. Um, we'll be looking for turkey, RSVP, if you'd like a Thanksgiving turkey, or try to finagle ham in there instead of turkey. Um, and then put on your calendars, the Christmas party will be December eighth, it's a Monday, out at the Desert Lily Facility in Smithfield. That's all I have. Oh, and the city's been recognizing breast cancer awareness month, we all wear our pink on Thursdays. There's a Facebook post I put out a few hours ago, and we've gotten lots of thumbs up, some things like that, and I think we're. Enjoying that, leaving, and I get really confused about what I've been wearing pink, so, we, again, look like a, a baby. The shower today, but, um, it's been great, kind of a community building and staff building. Yeah, and we had pink on during the day and then opted to change and. Yeah, boys just don't talk about coordinating outfits. That's all I have.